I'd like to call this meeting to the Dalton Select Board to order, please. All those in able, please stand for the pledge. And John, would you read us some pledges, please?
I pledge with my heart to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, nubilite and just as for all.
And before I do the roll call, I'd like to welcome Joe to the board. Joe, welcome.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
We'll put you to work.
I'm just looking for you.
Okay, welcome. Okay, Nancy, will you do the roll call, please?
Certainly. Mr. Diver.
Here.
Mr. Boyle.
Here.
Mr. Bishop.
Here.
Mr. Hollup.
Here.
Mr. Strout.
Here.
And Mr. Walton.
Here.
Okay. Next is the minutes on the agenda. May 13th, 2019. Have a motion when you're ready.
I move that we accept the minute as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any corrections? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Thank you. Okay. This is a time when the public may address the board on any item listed on the meeting agenda or any matter or issue of the town. If you intend on addressing the board, at this time, we ask you to do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company or slash institution you represent. The public address to the board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussions or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. Questions on procedural matters may be answered by the chair or the designated. If anyone wishes to be recognized when an agenda item is discussed by the board, please make that request at this time. This request may be granted by the board chair. Address comments to the board chair and be concise. Is there anyone who wants to speak to any one of the agenda items? Yes. Could you state your name?
Michael Forgy, Morton Energy Fuels, Dalton.
Okay, so you'd like to speak on item eight?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, I think if it's okay with it, I'm gonna move that number eight up next and so you don't have to hang around.
Appreciate that.
Okay. So, go to fuel storage permits. Ken, correct me if I'm wrong, but this one's because they have an empty fuel tank up there?
Yeah, they're not being filled. You can see there's a spreadsheet that Judy prepared for you showing two companies highlighted. They currently have tanks in the ground with the tanks. They're not being used.
How long have they not been used?
Ours have been empty since 2016.
2016, November 30. And so the issue is not to charge them the $100 fee, correct?
That's the request. And I don't believe Mr. Miller has been charged a fee in the past several years either.
Yeah, I remember it. No, he has not.
Mr. Wayne is attempting to get quotes to get them removed.
Okay, so the plan on is getting them removed. Is there any?
He also has an option of, not an option, but a plan of putting dry ice inside them. Close them up, seal them up, until you can get them removed. But he's also working on this.
So there's no use for them in the future?
No, they're not being used at all. They're not gonna be used either.
Motion to waive the $100 fee.
I move that we waive the $100 fee for Wayne Energy for the unused and tank that is expected to be excavated and removed.
There's four of them.
Four of them.
You said there's?
For the four, okay, I made my own motion. I move that we exempt the fee for the four tanks that are currently not being used at Wayne Energy on Cleveland Road.
I'll second that.
Okay, certain discussion. All those in favor?
Well, I'm sorry. Is this to have them removed now?
No, no. No, this is to waive the fee.
Okay. I would just, is it $100 regardless of how many tanks you have buried?
Yes.
It's $100 total, okay.
That's what it seems like.
The other thing I would say, the other thing I would say is though, that if the tanks, tanks are still there next year, I don't think you should waive it next year. You know?
Yeah, we'll give them the benefit of the doubt or come up with some plan by next year.
With the formality of closing it with dry ice in it, would that suffice for an extra?
I would think so. Okay, a motion's been made.
I had a quick take following up on what Ed said. I thought it was $100 per tank.
Is it $100 per tank?
$100 per site.
I think it's $100 per site, but I can't say that I'm certain.
Yeah, because all these other ones, there's multiple tanks at different places, and they're only $100. And all drains have them.
Okay.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the fees waived. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, next we'll go to number six, appointment of the BRTA representative. Ken, do you want to expand on that for us, please?
Well, my law, the chairman of the select board is the BRTA representative. And from time to time.
Congratulations.
The board can name someone else to represent them in their place, and this board's customarily chosen one of its number to fill that position.
Okay. Okay, does anyone want to do that?
Well, this may be my fault. I misinterpreted the letter that you sent me, Ken, as a memo. I am the representative of the BRTA.
That's what I thought.
I thought it was automatic.
Me too.
Maybe if I signed it, I don't know why I was supposed to do it, Ken. It was my mistake.
Yeah, the, you can see that there's just a letter in here from Bob Malatian, the administrator, asking us to name the representative. So I think this, I think it occurs on a naming basis. Typically do this.
Do you want to still?
Sure.
Okay. Is anybody object? Not me. All right, thank you, John. So, do we need to vote on that, Ken? We don't have to vote on that?
I don't think so by consensus.
Oh, it's gonna challenge that. All right, you just need to fill that out.
All right.
Okay. And the second appointment is Boyd Leftright, John Bartels, for the Central Berkshire Regional School District Town Advisory Committee, the seven-town advisory committee. We talked to Joe. Joe's been pretty active in the schools. So Joe has accepted to do that. So, Joe, we will appoint you to that.
Great. Excellent. Mr. Chairman, there was a third late appointment there. I don't know if you had to see that in front of you.
Yeah, can we do that without it being on the agenda?
I think so. We just announced that it came late.
Okay.
Do we have to vote on Joe's?
I don't think so. It's a no. Yeah, we can. Some of you.
Okay. I move that we appoint Joe Diver to be our representative on the seven-town finance committee. Is that the title of it?
Advisory Committee.
Advisory Committee.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. You can't vote.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, Joe. I appreciate it. And whenever you need to report, please feel free to bring a report to the committee.
Sure.
They'll pull you out on an agenda item, okay? Okay, we have a next on there for an appointment is a ratification of appointment of Cable Advisory Committee. God, these things stink. I recommend for your ratification appointment of John Bartels Jr. of 37 Sleepy Howell Drive to the Dalton Cable Advisory Committee for the initial term to expire on June 30th, 2020. He replaces Mr. John Bates, who has resigned. Ratification of this appointment will bring the committee's roster to a full seven members. Thank you for consideration of this appointment. May I have a motion, please?
Do we have a resume of his?
I don't think so.
I moved at Dalton, I mean, I moved that John Bartel be appointed to the Dalton Advisory Cable Commission.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I'd just like to, because this is an agenda item that was added today, not the appointments, but the appointment of this particular person. For your benefit, I want you to know, I only received the resignation today, and we have a meeting next week, so I wanted to make sure there was a full complement of members on this committee.
Okay, no problem at all. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, John. Okay, Ken, do you want to go over the draft warrant?
Okay. Now, you'll notice, this is for the draft, this is the draft warrant for the June 24th, 2018, 2019, that's in my era.
Oh, yeah. Be a little late.
Meeting. And you'll notice there are no numbers to these warrant articles. They can be placed in any particular order that you want them to be, and this is not final law. This is a first cut at it. And I'll just run briefly through what these are all about. In most cases, I don't even have numbers yet for them. So as you know, we have to annually appropriate the money for the Chapter 90 grant that we received from the state. That's the number one article here. And we would do that at this meeting because we can't spend that money until we appropriated at town meeting. And that's about a quarter of a million dollars. Again, I don't have exact numbers yet. Similarly, the next article is curing the deficit we have in snow and ice. It's the only budget we can overrun without town meeting approval of the extra expenditures, but we always cure that deficit by the end of the fiscal year. If we do not, that gets automatically raised on the tax recap next year. It just goes into the tax rate. The third article is the, would be cash appropriated from the capital stabilization fund. That's why there's a two-thirds vote required. It can come from any source, of course, for the annual amendment of the capital improvement program. I'm just working on that now. Let me say though, that first off, it's gonna be a pretty skinny program this year for obvious reasons, but also because I haven't really had any formal requests from town department heads for particular items. So right now, I'm mainly gonna be updating the capital improvement plan. But I'm meeting with department heads tomorrow, and I'm gonna emphasize that to them. But typically, we get these during the budget process, and then I put them all together at this time for this special town meeting. Some, the next article is similar. If we were going to borrow any money, we need authority to borrow that money. That would be for the capital improvement program. And again, right at this very minute, I don't have anything I think we need to borrow for, but it's on there. The next one is for any extraordinary sewer system expenses. Now, we may not need this article at all because that can be rolled up into the capital improvement article that we just went over. And I'm trying to strategize here about how we get this done. So let's say it can be done separately or together at your desire or discretion. And a two-thirds vote is needed for that. The next is if we need to transfer any money from fiscal 19 because we're running into a shortfall. Now, as you know, we can do that. The finance committee in the select board via the municipal modernization act can transfer any amounts of money between departments. So we probably don't need this one, but I've put a lot of articles on it that we customarily have. Right now, it's, don't know of anything specific that we would have to do. The next article is typically we have some amendments to our budget, and that is usually taken up at the last meeting of the fiscal year. Right now, again, I don't have anything in particular that I can tell you about. Again, another item for, from the stabilization fund for extraordinary expenses, two-thirds vote is required if it comes out of the sewer stabilization account. And again, I don't have anything specific at the, right now. Article, the next article is to pay unpaid bills from the prior fiscal year. You will remember that we had one of these on the annual town meeting warrant. Well, sorry, my mistake. I didn't have the right number in there, so we were short. I forget what it was, but it's a small amount of money to finish paying that unpaid bill we had at the annual town meeting. The next article is for amendments to, these are the amendments for recycling requirements. And there's two pieces of this. One is bylaws, Chapter 270 of the town code, and the other is, I think it's Chapter 605 of the Board of Health Regulations. The Board of Health had a hearing this evening on it. And this is a requirement for generators. That means the people who generate trash in the community. Chapter 270 looks pretty much like this, but this is a strengthening of that bylaw. And remember, we spoke about that some time ago. We had a meeting with the waste haulers, and we're trying to put this all together for the end of the year, including an amendment with our contractor for improving the collection of recyclables. That's still under review by town council. Final review. Articles, the next three articles would all be necessary if we were to settle, as you know, all of our collective bargaining agreements are in discussion. We'd like to settle them before the end of the fiscal year. If we do so, it would be ideal to appropriate the money at this special town meeting so that we can start off the fiscal year with those new amendments in place. The next one is if we had any amendments to the schedule of compensation for elected officials, that would be required, and that's a two-thirds vote. And that is, yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Are there any questions for Ken?
There's one coming, Bob.
Sure.
Just expanding the recycling collection thing, if people have private haulers. Could be a contentious or interesting issue. I just think it better served if this was out of the annual town meeting, but I realize that there may be time constraints here. But I think the Board of Health should have thought of that.
I do too, because it's putting a financial, they're gonna have to increase their fees to do this.
Absolutely.
And right now, the recycle market is not as strong as it used to be. I mean, people, it's being overwhelmed, and so that's why they're starting to charge people. They used to accept it for nothing.
Right.
And so now we have to pay.
There will be a charge. We don't know yet what it's gonna be.
And Ken, as you said, they're still working on it, and the attorneys haven't reviewed it yet. I just thought.
There was an initial review. We did an initial review, but this is a secondary review as we review the warrant.
I mean. I just hope enough people show up to realize it. Okay, anything else? All right, thank you, sir. Okay, next on the agenda is the update on the Dowling Bridge Memorial. John and Mark?
We have a motion to recommend the warrant to the town meeting.
Yeah, let's do that, yes.
I move that we recommend the warrant as presented to the special town meeting on the 24th, Ken?
It'll be the 24th.
On June 24th.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Take it, John.
Yep.
Time and place for that meeting?
Oh, yes, that's going to be at Nessakis. At 7:00 on June 24th, 2019.
Oh, we'll be back there. Back again. Quick update on the Dowling dedication this Saturday. Everything seems to be falling into place. The signs are up by the state of Massachusetts. They did an exemplary finish when this thing was virtually unapproved three or four weeks ago. Went through the House, the Senate, and the District 1, Department of Transportation quickly installed them after the governor signed the bill and immediately put them up. They look great. The plaque is up and in place, and all the arrangements have been made. I've had a great deal of assistance from members of the select board, the general public, and the family of Mitchell Dowling. So, all we're waiting for is the weather. Because Dowling doesn't really have a backup plan, but yeah, there is, but hopefully we don't have to utilize it. And the backup plan would be at McQuarrie Regional. And I think Aaron Robb mentioned it, the cafeteria. And the reason for that is they've got so many events going on this week. This is their event. They've got events Wednesday night, Thursday night, Friday night, and Sunday's the graduation. So, and there's a labor problem too. You have to, if you use the backup site in the high school, you have to deal with the labor unions. So, I think we should be all set. Keep your fingers crossed for the weather, and hopefully, I urge everyone, if you're able, please turn out.
Thank you. Okay, anything else on, Mark, you want to add anything?
No.
Okay. Number 10, the select board meeting scheduled for June and July. Ken, what are we up against as far as time constraints?
Okay, typically, you would have met on the 10th of June, 2nd, and the 4th, and the 24th. We may still need a special, as we've done in the past, a special meeting at 6:00 in order to do the annual appointments. We've done that a couple of times.
Yes.
But, so, there's still, there may be meetings on, at least one on the 24th. I'm gonna suggest to you, however, that you have meetings on the 3rd and the 17th. Okay? Particularly the 17th, because we met with our fiscal advisor last week, and the town is gonna sell State House notes for the expenditures that were authorized for borrowings. And typically, at the end of the fiscal year, we turn those into notes, that spending into notes, because we have to cure that deficit by the end of the fiscal year. But the offering won't be made until June 4th with a settlement requiring the select board signatures, but they can't do that. Our fiscal advisor can't have that to us until the 17th. So I thought that maybe, and then by the 17th, I'll have a lot of the numbers for the annual town, for the special town meeting. So it might make a more convenient time to meet than the 10th. Similarly, on the 3rd, I thought you might want to meet to take a final look at the warrant, what I've condensed it to. But that's not absolutely necessary, as you've approved the warrant here tonight, and if I have the discretion to eliminate those articles, which we're not gonna need, and it's subject to review at town council, which town council's already looking at it, then we may not have to meet the 3rd. It's your pleasure.
What's your discretion? Do you think we should just?
You know, I think, yes, if only just to take a second look at the final draft, make sure you're comfortable with it, and if there's any progress on labor negotiations, I don't want to talk about it.
Okay, okay. It'll be a quick one.
So that would mean there's no need to meet on the 10th, if you decided that. And are agreeable to meeting on the 17th.
Okay, so everybody can make those?
Yes. And we will not have the regular select board meeting at 6:00 on the day of the special town meeting, the 24th, if we have the appointments ready for you on the 17th.
That'd be, that'd be great.
So that's what I'm trying to do, make sure the appointments.
Sometimes we're right up till the last minute on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, in July, Ken, I would ask you, it's a regular meeting date anyway, I'm right for 4th of July, but on the 8th, the notes for the demolition of all Dalton, we now have bond anticipation notes out, and those have to be not only added to, but extended to the middle of January.
Okay.
So, again, those won't be ready for your signature until the 8th of July.
Okay.
So if you're willing to meet on that date, and that's a regular meeting date anyway.
Right.
And then it's, it's your discretion as to whether you want to have the 22nd.
Okay, we are supposed to meet at the Senior Center.
Oh, right, I forgot about that, yeah.
In June and July. So do we want to make?
I thought it was July and August.
July and August, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Do you want to make the 8th at the Senior Center?
Okay.
Same time?
Yeah. Okay, as far as the 22nd, can we wait to the 8th and see if we have anything pressing for the 22nd?
Sure.
Okay. So we can do, do we need a final, I don't think they need to.
No. We can also look at August, not the 8th, too.
Okay, so we're all clear, we're gonna meet on the 3rd of June, the 17th, and the 8th of July at the Senior Center. Okay?
Let's continue, Bob. When is your special meeting?
17th is a special meeting. 8th is a regular meeting. The 3rd is a special meeting.
That's right.
3rd and 17th are special meetings.
Okay, Ken, are you ready for your updates?
Yes, I have one. I need your update for you. We are finishing up under, you will recall that we had, it's part of our Green Communities Project, we're gonna try to improve the insulation in the town hall. We received a special grant from the state to do the detailed architectural engineering, remember that was preceded by an energy audit, which gave us an estimate, an estimated cost for doing the work, and then an estimated energy savings for doing the work as specified. The architect, Berry Architects, that we selected to detail, they've actually divided into two projects, the front part of the town hall and then the, this part of the town hall. Actually, the projects, the cost estimates have finally come in. The drawings are in your box. The cost estimates just come in today, and I'll print those and put them in your box. The cost estimates are far higher than the original estimate, because far more work is required in this old building to make it ready to accept insulation, particularly in the front of the building. And if you gotta take out all the floorboards, all the knob and tube wiring, turns out that the whole plaster in this building has asbestos in it. They used it as a fire retardant in those days, and it has to be encapsulated or removed. So it becomes quite costly in the estimate for the front portion of the town hall. And then some of the hip roof in the front of the building has to be shored a little bit, so that's about $80,000. And up here, remember, we have to build a whole superstructure to accept the insulation. And that is even more costly, it's about $180,000. So, we will apply for one or more of those grants coming in January of this year. The maximum we can apply for is $250,000, and we got $237, I think, to change out the LED lights. So that's where we are with it. It's unfortunate that it came out so expensive, but.
All right. Okay, is that it, Ken?
That's it. And I can't, I can't tell you, I wish I had figured out what the payback is, but I would assume the energy savings is about the same, and I'll figure out what the payback is.
Okay, that'd be good to know. Okay, items for future agenda. I have one. The White House, I know you told me, Ken, there's only one bid on that, but should we put that on the agenda to?
Yeah.
Can we put that on for the next agenda?
We should. I'm glad you brought that up, because I should have done that as part of my updates. I completely forgot about it. Yes, we received one bid Friday, and that was from Habitat for Humanity. We had one other small contractor look at it, but he decided not to bid in the end. He would have had to hook up with a nonprofit organization to be eligible for it, and he decided not to go forward with it. So, not only will we have, we'll have it on at the next agenda. I'll take a more careful look at it. Their proposal is to buy the land for a dollar, put a single-family house roughly in the middle of the lot, tear down what's there. So I'm gonna take a closer look at it, make sure it conforms to what we've asked for, and I'll have a recommendation for you, and you can go through in detail. We'll ask Habitat to be here.
Okay.
If we can do that on the 3rd, that'll be a good agenda.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Can I? Yeah, who?
Ken, if the board agrees, if we vote to award this to Habitat for Humanity, how long will it take for the legal action to transfer, transfer entitlement deed?
Boy, that's a, that's a tough one, let me, let me look at that, Johnny, I don't want to just say it off the top of my head, but it takes, probably take, probably take more time to work off the legal details.
Yeah, because they, off the record, they asked me about this.
Yeah.
These Habitat guys, because they're right across the street working, I said, hey, these things take time, but we're talking about many, I don't think that's going to happen. You have to transfer the title, the deed, and the legal work.
Right.
Clear the title, and, yeah, I thought it was more realistic, at least a couple months after.
Would Habitat, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Would Habitat turn, tear the building down?
Yes.
Oh, they wouldn't?
Now, the proposal's to tear the building down.
Thank you.
And, and put in a single-family, three-bedroom structure slab on grade, so it's not a full
And they're going to keep the current lot size, or are they going to shrink the lot size?
Yeah, it'll be that lot, yeah, we'll be transferring that lot, it's about 12,000 square feet.
Okay.
Wasn't, when we talked about initially, wasn't there an issue with the back part of it, like we were talking, cutting the lot size down?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
We did, what happened was, it completely slipped my mind, forgive my aging brain, that we had actually subdivided that lot in 2012, and I'd forgotten about it, and when I put Becky Slick on researching where we were, she, she found the plan.
Okay.
So, it's done.
Perfect.
Good.
Good work.
Okay, is there any others for future agendas?
All right, I think maybe I have represented the MPO and the BRTA, there's some interesting things going on with both organizations as they relate to Dalton, maybe I should give the board an update on both.
Okay, we'll put that on next, next?
3rd, good, yeah.
Okay. What was that, Johnny?
The MPO and the, that's the Metropolitan Plan of Origin, there's highways and things, and as it pertains to Dalton Division Road, that's info on that, and then the BRTA, just kind of a general statement where they're at, which isn't good, but.
There's a couple of things on there, Bob, if you want to, like, the whiting oil, flammable storage, and all that.
Yeah, we'll get that off there.
Also, just real quick, I got some additional, for the thing where you and I were working on for the APR property, I had some additional information today, I'll need you to.
Okay, and will we be ready for the 3rd on that? Or you want to wait?
No, we'll wait on that, I'll talk to you about it.
Okay.
Painting of the crosswalks, I'd like to change that from painting of the main street crosswalks to the adding, get rid of the painting and do the flashing lights on the
Ken, is it possible to get the streets that are going to be paved for next, for next meeting on your update? I think every one of us has been asked 100 times.
Yeah.
What streets are going to get paved. Anything else? Okay, gentlemen, thank you. Remarques to the Select Board, does anybody have any remarks?
Yeah, just one quick one, Bob, I saw this flyer right here.
Yeah.
From the Senior Center, about, what caught my attention was Saturday, June 22nd. I'm almost positive that that's the day they're going to have a big ceremony down there to, on completion of the Habitat for Humanity project on issue to Town Street, and I'm certain this board will be invited.
Okay.
So, I don't know if there's a conflict here or not with this, this is a council on aging event.
That's, yeah.
I don't know what the time of that dedication ceremony is, yeah.
Okay, this says, join the Dalton seniors Saturday, June 22nd, at the Senior Center from 11:00 to 3:00. There's 11:30 to 12:30 physical therapy, exercise equipment orientation, there's a barbecue open house, it says, bring a chair. I'll tell you one thing, if I do that exercising, I'll need a wheelchair. They're going to have Berkshire Health Systems, blood pressure clinics in the afternoon, and Bob Shepherd's going to play music, and they're going to have a DJ, so, rain or shine. Barbecue available from 12:00 to 2:00 for $5, all ages welcome. Okay, does anybody else have any remarks to the Select Board?
Just a brief remark, just to say thank you to all the members of the Select Board, and to Ken and Nancy and everyone else in the, in the town hall, just made my welcome to this committee very friendly and easy on board and process.
Thank you.
So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Looking forward to the great work at it.
Okay, I have one other quick one, on the 27th of June, there's going to be a diversity and tolerance talk, it's going to be by Keith Willis, who used to play NFL football for the Kansas City Chiefs, it's being sponsored by the 12th Man Go Blue, the CRA, Dalton Benefit Associations, and the Dalton Airlines Club, and the Stationery Factory, and it's going to be a very, very good talk, and they want to nip some things and talk to the kids and get all this stuff out in the open, so, everybody has a good understanding and a good diversity understanding. So, I think, and it's open to the public, and it's free of charge. Anything else? That leads us to the announcements. State Representative Paul Mark holds office hours at the Dalton Town Hall, 462 Main Street in the Callahan Room, on Tuesdays from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, with the exception of the 3rd Tuesday of each month. On the 3rd Tuesday, his office hours are 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Town Hall, and from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM at the Dalton Senior Center. You can reach his office at its district's number, which is 413-464-5635. I'll be holding office hours at the Dalton Senior Center every first Thursday of the month from 3:00 to 4:30 PM, beginning June 6th. To reserve time at the Dalton Senior Center, please call 413-684-2000. For further information or to schedule another appointments, please call 684-6111, extension 11. On the other Thursdays, I will be holding office hours here from 3:00 to 4:30, okay? The Dalton Green Committee is looking for new members, if interested, contact the town manager's office at 684-6111, extension 11. And the Conservation Commission is looking for new members, if interested, contact the town manager's office, 684-6111, extension 11. I move that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the public body.
I'm pushing.
Yep.
I move we adjourn to executive session, not return to open session, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with union and non-union personnel, and with respect to litigation, and to comply with or act under the authority of any general law or special law, Chapter 214, Section 1B, right of privacy. Chairman must declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect upon the negotiating position of the public body, and not return to open session.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call vote, Mark?
Yes.
Edward?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Bob, yes. Okay, we're in recess for five minutes.